Is that a real bird? Is that a real bird?
That's a real bird.
Wow.
Okay, there we are, ladies and gentlemen, we are live. And we got everybody on camera. Let's make sure things fit and right, let's turn on a little a little gentle music, alright, there we are, thank you, welcome, it's Synergy Sessions, we are live, we are streaming. And thank you for tuning in. We have a few of the doctors in house here. Welcome Dr. George, Dr. Vestna, Dr. Sasha, and we'll keep the eye out for anybody else popping in. So today is another session, Synergy Solutions. And the description's in the, the link is in the description, as well as all the other connections. And here we are, we're doing some group quantum remote healing, using a method called Core and Specific Technique. And you can dive into that detail, as you wish, but today, we're gonna be talking about coherence. And I have one of my favorites. Dr. Bruce Lipton. And so enjoy, you know, I, I love that Dr. George is here in the Philadelphia area, and we have Sasha over there in the United Kingdom. And look at, look at the nature behind them, and Sasha so beautifully put a picture up. It's an amazing thing that no matter where we are, there's, there's the sunlight, there's, 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 the world keeps going on, doesn't it?
It does.
It does, it does. So let me bring up Dr. Bruce. Somebody, some people call him Uncle Dr. Bruce. And let me turn off a few things on my end, and then we'll get started with the, with the video. And we're gonna be using this to comment on and inspire us. So I want to say thank you to Dr. Bruce. And there we are, make sure the screen fits nicely, so let me turn this off, and let's get started with, we're talking about coherence. Coherence. Let me back it up to the start. That should be good.
It's all lined up together.
There we go.
The difference between coherence and incoherence. Coherence means it's all lined up together, and incoherence is the energy's just dissipated. So just to give you an idea of what's the difference between coherence and incoherence? If you take a 10 watt light bulb and turn it on, you're gonna get a glow out of that light bulb, it's not gonna be white light, actually be sort of more orangey-yellow, because it's not very high voltage, it's a low voltage. And I go, wow, so you can barely read, you know, a book under that 10 watt light bulb. But then here's what, in a laser, you take those, those energy, you know, it's those photons, and instead of just like dispersing them randomly like a light bulb, the light, the photons are going off in all directions simultaneously. But I said, what if you make it coherent? Ah, that's called a laser, where all the photons are now streaming down in a narrow beam. And I say, if you take a 10 watt light bulb and make it coherent, and a laser, make it into a laser beam, so all the photons, instead of randomly being dispersed, are all going down in a narrow beam. A 10 watt light bulb, the 10 watts in the laser will burn a hole in your wall. It is so powerful, that'll melt your wall right in front of you, 10 watts. And I go, wow, the same 10 watts that I could barely read by, and I say, yeah, now I say, now put that in the body. I say, why is it relevant? If my energy, my Qi, isn't really totally organized, it's like a 10 watt light bulb, I'm hardly lighting up anything with my energy. But if I learn how to exercise, it's really an exercise of causing flow in the body, the flow of the energy. And the more you practice, the more it becomes coherent. And I say, what's the relevance?
I didn't see anything. I haven't I haven't heard not heard anything, or seen anything.
Me neither. Nothing.
Just a few, a few little a few little squeaks, that's all.
The difference between coherence and incoherence. Coherence means it's all lined up together, and incoherence is the energy's just dissipated.
Yes.
Yes.
The difference between coherence and incoherence. Coherence means it's all lined up together, and incoherence is the energy's just dissipated. So just to give you an idea of what's the difference between coherence and incoherence? If you take a 10 watt light bulb and turn it on, you're gonna get a glow out of that light bulb, it's not gonna be white light, actually be sort of more orangey-yellow, because it's not very high voltage, it's a low voltage. And I go, wow, so you can barely read, you know, a book under that 10 watt light bulb. But then here's what, in a laser, you take those, those energy, you know, it's those photons, and instead of just like dispersing them randomly like a light bulb, the light, the photons are going off in all directions simultaneously. But I said, what if you make it coherent? Ah, that's called a laser, where all the photons are now streaming down in a narrow beam. And I say, if you take a 10 watt light bulb and make it coherent, and a laser, make it into a laser beam, so all the photons, instead of randomly being dispersed, are all going down in a narrow beam. A 10 watt light bulb, the 10 watts in the laser will burn a hole in your wall. It is so powerful, that'll melt your wall right in front of you, 10 watts. And I go, wow, the same 10 watts that I could barely read by, and I say, yeah, now I say, now put that in the body. I say, why is it relevant? If my energy, my Qi, isn't really totally organized, it's like a 10 watt light bulb, I'm hardly lighting up anything with my energy. But if I learn how to exercise, it's really an exercise of causing flow in the body, the flow of the energy. And the more you practice, the more it becomes coherent. And I say, what's the relevance about that? If if you can mobilize this energy and make it coherent, my God, you become super powerful. And this is where all that, you know, Asian martial arts stuff comes from, is being able to focus the energy and using it to empower. And healers can do this by using their hands, with focusing their energy, their Qi, they can bring their hands up and put energy into a system, just like lasers. And heal somebody with that energy, okay? Or in a, you know, martial arts, you can use that energy to ward off an attack. And so the point about is this, why are you doing the exercises? The answer is to enhance your power. And I say, how do you enhance your power? Because you start to be able to control the flow of energy, and take it from an incoherent state, which has little power. But by making the flow and controlling it, then it's like controlling a stream of energy. And that's where the power comes from, the power in martial arts fighting. But the same power can be used, not just for, for, for fighting, but for healing.
Yes.
So he was referring to, I believe in this conversation, Qi Gong. And of course, he related it to martial arts. And for those that are unaware, chiropractic is, in many ways, founded on the same exact principles, in fact, if you go to the school that founded it out in Iowa, Davenport, Iowa, that's where I attended. And there is, there is different Oriental and Asian art and artifacts all over the property. It's an amazing
There we go, I know, it may have not been heard, so nonetheless, man, we're having some interesting times today. Some of the conversations Bruce was talking about, related to Qi Gong, and that it was also connected to fighting, but also healing, and chiropractic is founded on many of the philosophies that also are steeped from that same region of the world. And we talk about in this, in the chiropractic circle, the safety pin cycle, information's going down the brain, and down through the spinal cord, and up through the spinal cord, that's a, it's a cycle of communication. And it's the same in nature, there's these cycles of patterns. So coherence, that's what the conversation was about today. Dr. George, Vestna, Sasha, I'm gonna put you on the spot, and what did you hear, and what did you find that was important in that conversation, Dr. Bruce just shared with us, Vestna, I'm gonna ask you to go first today.
Okay, thank you. I I was thinking of my mind, myself, my mind, when I'm sort of incoherent, where I'm kind of all over the place. It's different to when I'm focused, I notice it even when I work, while I'm delivering treatment. Yes, that's, that's how I, what I associated it with, when it's coherent, it just flows.
Right, right, there's more, well, there's, as someone who does the work of healing, there is this, there's this place, I know I find myself in this total silence. And there's extreme awareness, and extreme focus where to be, and how to be, and the angles to be, and all that, and there's this whole analysis process that we do in our work as KST doctors. And I just had a wonderful conversation about all the science around the biofield, and and what the OD, and what KST are doing. And essentially, if I can put it in one word, we're, we're helping the client, we're helping the individual, in this case, we are helping the collective who connects to us, and all that we have the intention of is finding greater coherence in their lone lives, with what we're doing here. And that, of course, there's some type of effect that goes on, and with coherence, it seems like it's a powerful and empowering response to the work that, that can be done. Sasha, tell me, what did you notice in Dr. Bruce's conversation that was important for you?
Um what I thought, Kevin, was that it's the reason that we're, we're in this little group here, is because that effect that Vestna was talking about, it's magnified when more than one person joins, joins a group, and we, and we work together.
Yes. Yes.
That's what it, that's what it made me think of.
Wonderful, and that's the exact intention of what we're doing here, from, from my perspective, as far as employing the power of, of, of the team. And knowing that there's a much more that can be accomplished in that way. And so with this, with this avenue, in which, in which you're watching now, if you're just tuning in, by the way, if you've got some value so far, give a thumbs up, give a heart, comment that you got value. And that opens the door with the algorithm, so other people can connect to this message. And this is about goodness, this is about helping you and your life accomplish what you need to do in your life. Ultimately, and, and in whatever form or fashion, the higher wisdom in your life is, is directing you towards, I, I'm, I'm hoping, and I'm intending, and I knowing that this is something that can help you accomplish that. And Dr. George, transitioning.
Yes.
Tell me what you heard, what was important for you.
I, I had heard the term coherence, I didn't quite understand it as clearly as I do now, that makes a lot of sense. And I was thinking about, well, how do I comment in a way you guys haven't? One of the things I picked up through the science a few years ago, is something called a soliton wave. And so, a soliton wave is, is to sound what a laser is to light. So instead of, instead of nerve energy flowing, like, you know, willy-nilly all over the place, they find that, that the method of propagation of information over nerves is the soliton wave, it's a straight line laser of sound. And it's, it's kind of a bizarre concept, and it only propagates in particular materials, so soliton waves, the nerves are the perfect medium for them to do that. So how we bring coherence into the body, with chiropractic adjustment, by clearing the nervous system interference, is allowing all the messages to be flowing like in a straight line, you might say. And I also wanna go back to something Sasha said, that as individuals doing our own adjustments on people, it's, it's less powerful in a way, than when we all put our heads together, and you create a stronger stream, because we're all having the same intention. So, yeah. Coherence, I like it.
That's beautiful, and thank you for, you know, essentially, you're introducing a lot of deep concept into, in the statement you just said about the soliton wave, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, soliton.
I, now I have something more to investigate, thank you, Dr. George.
It's, it's sound waves that make the bodies sound, yeah.
Well, it's an interesting experience, what music can do for people. It's an amazing experience to be in a crystal ball healing session, it's an amazing experience when you're attending a choir of people singing in, in great magnitude and power. We know that sound has impact, and there's even scientists that study frequencies and the, the shapes it causes in physical form. There's a great video, and I, and I'll post it in the Synergy Solutions group, so if, if you want to see that group, go to the link, Synergy Solutions, get connected. Synergy Solutions Sessions dot com, and then you have, you can start getting the path to access to what I'm talking about here. However, there's a great video of, of a sound plate, there's many, many, many videos of this, and they sprinkle sand on top, and they've raised the, the, the frequency, and at certain points, you know, and the classic one, of course, is middle C, but every note that you would find on a piano, has a, has a certain tone and frequency and vibration associated with it. And the sand literally takes a geometric shape at certain points. And the higher the range, the more intricate, and complicated, and artistic, I will say. These, these forms that look like chaos in between those points, but when they get to that exact moment, it's a perfect shape, a perfect design that is laid out on this sound plate. And that's coherent, Dr. George, please.
Yeah, I, I think that's an example of a standing wave. I, I've seen a similar thing, where they do it in, in a tank of water, and the waves just go up and stand there. Here's the kid. We are standing waves. Our physical bodies are standing waves.
Yeah.
How important is tone now to the chiropractic story?
Very important realization to have, that we are a vibrational pattern, and if I may, if I may, I dare say tones, frequency, vibration, vocalization, words, words have meaning, words have impact. In the beginning was the word, I mean, that's like the opening statement of one of the most famous books of all time. Let's consider that for a moment, that there is the sound or frequencies that cause this physical shape to occur, and it's human, it's human, and it's cosmological, and it's, it's, it's phenomenal study. So we're gonna employ the use of these waves, the use of this knowledge, and for the good of everyone who's connected here and now, and anyone who comes, connects at any time. Irrelevant of space, and, and distance, and time, irrelevant of that. Setting your intention while observing and connecting to us here and now evokes the effect, evokes the effect that we're looking for. Alright, so is everyone ready to get started?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna turn on a little bit of light music here. Very good, and the birds are chirping perfectly in time. Just a wonderful, wonderful sign. I, I, if I may comment. As one develops greater levels of awareness and observation, one notices that the universe is simply responding. We're responding, we're co-creating. And we can be coherent with nature in this change, in this evolution, because there is a change happening, one way or the other. And being able to adapt and be resilient is part of the nature of when one is coherent. It's interesting, you know, we say we're coherent, we, after, I've been knocked out a couple of times, and then I wake up. You come out of incoherence into coherence, it's a nice state. So that being said, as we're all tuning in, and we're getting, we're having some fun now. You, there's something in your heart, there's something in your mind that you're moving towards. Just allow that to be present in your mind, something that you're healing in your life, a pain, a problem, you're looking for solutions, in some form or fashion, allow that to connect with you now, here and now, and the doctors will do our process as we connect to the collective that's connecting to us right now. And we have what's called a surrogate, and, and when Sasha's on camera, she shows, she shows Teddy, and we all each have a form or fashion for what is the surrogate, however, we are facilitating the shift, facilitating the coherent state of mind, body, spirit, soul, all those levels and dimensions that we could or may not have mentioned as well. So just take one or two deep breaths, and if you're finding some value, please thumbs up, give a heart, let other people know they can connect, and find some coherence in their life as well. Okay, Dr. George, how we doing?
Still going.
Okay. Yeah, I'm still, something's still processing on my end. It's like everyone's still going.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, Sasha, you ready over there?
Yeah, yeah, finished.
Okay, thank you. And Vestna, let us know when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay. Again, just a different kind of experience today. I love the uniqueness of it. There's periods I noticed a great joy, and great, lightheartedness was one of the primary themes that came right in the middle of it all. And now there's this calm and sereneness is come through me. And I really appreciate that, maybe it come from me. So Sasha, please, if you could, please, let us know what you started with. And what you noticed, what you found.
Today's priority was just this group of four practitioners, for whatever reason. That's, that's what came up, and it was it was adjusting for grief. Processed well.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for the attention. And Dr. George wrote down something, so I think he wrote down grief.
I did. I got lung coverings, a bunch of grief in there. Liver came up, anger. And the ureters pissed off again. But I, I feel really good, I feel like it's, it's all okay now. Everything's okay now, yeah. Couple hollows, couple solid, very different adjustment, hit Atlas, second thing in. But, uh, yeah, definitely, definitely grief, definitely grief today.
Okay, Vestna, what'd you notice today?
Ah, the emotion that came up was guilt. Feeling of guilt, and just a couple of spinal adjustments, nothing unusual.
Yeah, nothing unusual, and however, however, for the ones that are being introduced to what chiropractic is on a, on a foundational, or on the mainstream level right now, bones are moved to take pressure off nerves. And this nerves can flow, the communication can go, and that builds coherence. And Dr. George talked about C1, and that's the main gateway between the cranium and the rest of the body. And then, and just like you, Dr. George, that was the second spot I adjusted on my, well, I noticed I had to touch my, I just touched the side of my neck, and it's like the bone just shifted way over, it's like, wow. And then, and then, then the whole collective, I had the C1 adjustment as well, so there was something, I just had to touch my neck, and the bone went and I'm, I'm wondering how much of what we're working on today is us, but also, of course, everyone, if we're feeling things of this nature of grief and of guilt, other people are also releasing this. And if I could give it, if I could connect people with what's happening in the planetary alignments, and the movements of the, of the sun, and the moon, and the stars. We are in this place where things are aligning about healing the past, so we can move forward. We have to recognize what we value was important, what opportunities mean something to us, and act on them, and dropping, dropping the personal guilt, dropping the personal grief. Because those are the things that are holding us back, and we can process that, and as we, as we, Sasha shared today, it was handled easily. So that, that means, that means our bodies, that means the people connecting are able to move through the experience of the processing versus being stuck in it for years, or weeks, or days, or hours, and so when, when emotion overwhelms somebody, it can affect their whole day, affect their whole week. And so processing it is a normal mode of the body, then going back into coherence, which if I could throw in another term is homeostasis. And so processing it is a normal mode of the body, then going back into coherence, which if I could throw in another term is homeostasis. The greatest point of balance and adaptability and resilience is your homeostatic set point. However, as we do this kind of work, we can increase your homeostatic set point so that you're a more refined laser doing the work that you need to do in your life. Dr. George, not in agreement. I see Vesta smiling there. I know I feel good about what I said there.
I said, I like it.
Yeah. So if you got some value out of that, Sasha, thank you. If you've got some value out of that, please thumbs up, give a heart. You know, type in the chat, value, these are the things that connect other people. And we want to help more people with this because we know, and, and, and I had a great conversation yesterday. I'm going to talk to the doctors a little bit more about what just happened yesterday and what's going to happen tomorrow. The, the, the path to getting the research done for this has already been laid. And I had, was unaware of much that was already accomplished. Now we're going to add a next layer of research and taking that first step tomorrow. So I am super excited about that. And it's just another step in the right direction, like anything in life. Okay, thank you for tuning in. If you like it, please give thumbs up, share it, you know, share this with somebody that is looking for some interesting healing. If, if you know someone's interested in holistic healing, they want to connect with all kinds of things possible. And I think a lot of people are, are interested in a lot of remote kind of therapeutics. This is a great connection for them. And there's even a free download where you get three sessions, you just watch repeatedly. And you can build your own pattern of self-healing. And then of course, you want to connect on a deeper level and continue the upward and onward momentum to the next level. Synergysolutionssessions.com. I'm Dr. Kevin. We have Dr. George, Dr. Sasha and Dr. Vesta tuning in today. Thank you for your time. I really, really appreciate your efforts and your contributions. It's magnificent. Thank you. All right, everybody. All right, have a great day. I'll keep you.
See y'all later.
See you on the other side. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Is there another session of Synergy Solutions?